The meeting of the Waycross City Commission is now called to order. Let us rise for our invocation with Chief Eddings and our pledge of allegiance.
Mayor Commissioners, Mayor, you know if you get me up here, I'm gonna say a few things now. Looking at the world today in our country, seems to be every time we turn around, something's going on that's trying to cause division and disruption. And it reminds me of a passage in the Bible where one of the Pharisees that was a lawyer tried to trick Jesus and asked him, "Which was the greatest of the commandments?" And Jesus said, "The greatest commandment is to love the Lord thy God with all thy heart and all thy soul and all thy mind." And he said, "And the second one is likened to that one, that you love your neighbor as yourself." And I can tell you, I like me a lot. But it seemed like that's an easy thing to do. But it's the first and greatest commandment that Jesus talked about, but if you think about it, it's the hardest thing to do. We can tell people that we love them, those are just words. The hardest part is to actually show it. And we need to show some love in our community and in our world. It just needs to be shown, the love of Jesus through us. I had the opportunity, unfortunate opportunity, to go last week to a funeral of a childhood friend of mine that had passed away. And several people had asked me, because it's been thirteen years since I've been over here this March. And they asked me how I liked Waycross. And I told them, "One thing that really stands out about Waycross is people seem to get along." We don't always agree on things, but we seem to get along. If we have differences, we settle those differences amongst each other. We don't air them out, and it doesn't seem to drag our community down. We better not take that for granted. Because there's places out there where people are openly constantly fighting. They can't agree or seem to do anything. When the mayor asked me to do the prayer, that just came on my heart, that we just don't need to take the love that we have in our community for granted. No matter what background we come from, what walk of life we do, what socio-economic status we have in our community, we need to love each other and let that love shine. And I promise you, when people come through this community, they'll feel it, they'll know it. When I first came here, that was one of the things that was so strong in this community. And I still see it around here, but I can also see the devil trying to poke his head, and if we'll give him a little crack in that door. Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for this day, and thank you for the opportunities that you give me to be in the position that I'm in, dear God, and to give our mayor and commissioners and city manager and each of the department heads in the positions that they're given, God. And let us not take for granted that you've set us in these positions, dear God. And help us in everything that we say and that we do, that we are mindful to show the love of Christ in our decisions and in our, just our daily walk, dear God. Lord, God, thank you most of all that you loved each and every one of us enough that you sent your only Son, Jesus, to die for each and every single one of us, dear God. That no matter what we do, all we need to do is just ask for forgiveness, and you're willing and ready to forgive us. God, as we go about this meeting tonight, Lord, let the things that are said and done be pleasing to you. It's in your Son, Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We want to thank Chief Eddings for that invocation, and also for leading us into pledge. And truly, this world needs love. Divisiveness and hatred is not something that we need to aspire to. At this time, executive duties, schedule a public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, that needs to be scheduled. We're going to schedule it, the commission will, on February the sixteenth at four thirty P M. And that is set out there to add section six nineteen to article six of the zoning code of ordinances.
Thank you. February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, four thirty P M. The text will be set. Our official report from our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything for tonight.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. As a public service announcement from the mayor's office, do want to make you aware that vaccines are being distributed here in our city. We've already had Phase One begun with the healthcare workers as well as staff in clinical settings. There are also, Phase One B has already taken place as well and is going on at this present point with police, fire, and those citizens that are at this particular juncture seventy-five or sixty-five and older. So we're asking those of you who want to, please make certain that you sign up, call the Ware Department of Public Health, and they will set up your time that you can drive through, and they'll take care of you right there. And that's my announcement. At this point, do we have any public remarks on official actions?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Let us hear the consideration of our official actions.
Consent calendar. Approval of minutes, Waycross City Commission Planning and Information Session and Executive Sessions, Monday, January fourth, two thousand twenty-one, at five P M. Public hearing Tuesday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at four forty-five P M. Waycross City Commission Meeting and Executive Session, Tuesday, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, at five P M. There are no ordinance readings, privileged license renewals. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, is there a motion to receive the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
The motion is seconded that we receive the consent calendar. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent calendar approved. Madam Clerk?
Okay, bids. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I can read the bids from here?
Yes, certainly.
Okay, our first bid for tonight is the sale of real property bid, F Y twenty-one dash twelve, Alpha Elfo, excuse me, Alpha Ethel Street. The Waycross City Commission recently approved the sale of point two zero four acre lot on Alpha Ethel Street. Bids were sent into three known adjoining or neighboring property owners. Purchasing has received one bid on this two point zero four acres. It is staff recommendation to accept a bid at eight hundred dollars from Mr. Tyrone S. Harris Senior that adjoins this property. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bid approved. Madam Clerk?
Okay, our second bid is bid F Y twenty-one dash ten, water tank inspection and washouts. As requested of the City Commission, formal bids were issued to annual water tank inspections and washout. Purchasing has received two bids on this project. After staff review, it is our recommendation to award the bid to American Tank Maintenance for an annual cost of fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars for a period of five years. This is the lowest and best bid submitted, a bid stipulation is attached. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This does not include the painting, is that correct?
That is correct.
This is maintenance only.
This, yes ma'am, no, this is inspections and washouts. This is not maintenance.
Okay, okay. Now, the other thing is, this is, it's for five years, they're gonna guarantee it for five years, but there's a clause in there, if we're not happy, we can rebid it. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bid approved. Madam Clerk?
Third bid, Mr. Mayor, is surplus property for Waycross twenty-one dash zero five. The, there's attached items no longer needed for any department. We are requesting that these items be declared as surplus property so that the vehicle be traded into Enterprise Fleet Management, and the bar screens be sold as scrap metal, and all other items be sold on golf deals. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Has been motioned and seconded that we receive this bid. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bid approved. Madam Clerk?
Our final bid for tonight is F Y twenty-one dash fourteen for banking services. Purchasing has issued bids for banking services. Bids were sent out to seven local banking institutions. Purchasing has received two bids. After staff review, it is our recommendation to award to bid to AmerisBank as being the lowest monthly cost and also the best on interest rates. Interest to offset costs of monthly fees. It is staff recommendation that we approve the bid for Waycross, excuse me, for AmerisBank of Waycross, Georgia. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this bid?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner?
At the beginning of the year, the first meeting, didn't we approve a banking institute for the year?
Yes, ma'am. We had the bid out at that time, and the bid didn't come, it wasn't available until after that first meeting. So we had to declare the one that we already had at the time as sun trust.
City Manager, why was that bid so late going out when we always approve at the first meeting of the year?
Um, it was not late going out.
Well, then, why was it discussed before we approved that on the first meeting, then?
We did discuss it last year at the retreat. We just got the bid out when it went out. But what we can do now is go back and revise the official depository based on what we did last week.
I'm not disagreeing with that. We can go revise, and we can reconvene on it tonight and all that. I'm just saying, it should have been in here by the first meeting of the year. We should have not had appointed someone, and then why did we not have the bid in here by then?
At any point during the year, we can, we could have put that bid out. If we put it in June, then we've already chosen someone in January. That's just, what we have to do at the beginning of each year is choose the depository, but then throughout the year, whatever.
Well, why don't we choose a bid in November, December, so we'll know come January which who we going with then?
If the commission would like that, we can certainly do that.
Well, yeah, it needs to be done before we go just assign somebody and then come back later and put it out. And I have a question about it. There's a percentage of thirty-five percent versus, I wonder, what, explain that to me, what E R C is or whatever that is, E C R. E C R, there was, one was, one was at point three five and one was at point two oh.
That's the interest that we'll earn on our money.
So we're gonna be, the AmerisBank is offering us more interest?
Yes, ma'am.
So it will offset those fees, because some of the fees, I looked at all the fees, and some of them vary. So I guess China, did you, would you sit in on these bids as well?
Yes, ma'am. I went through both bids and compared them side by side, and Ameris is the lowest bid. And actually, once we get our interest rate on it, we'll still be making more money than we have to pay your monthly fee.
I saw that. So they're gonna be paying us actually more interest, so it, so our bid, our fees, all those fees we'll pay, we're really getting the interest we, we're gonna have a credit. Is that correct? Because I saw that as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I have to ask.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, at this time, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bid approved. Madam Clerk?
Ordinances. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to amend chapter six, alcoholic beverages, article two, licenses, section six dash seventy-four, restriction on licenses in section six dash seventy-six. Consideration by commission to repeal conflicting ordinances to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, to provide for renumbering or relettering, to declare an emergency, to allow for a second reading, and for other purposes. By adopting this ordinance, the City Commission will amend the City Code of Ordinance, sections six dash seventy-four and six dash seventy-six, to clearly define the process of applying for alcoholic beverage licenses and due process rights if the application is denied. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this ordinance?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance passes. Do we have a second read?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to amend chapter six, alcoholic beverages, article two, licenses, section six dash seventy-four, restrictions on licenses in section six dash seventy-six, consideration by the commission, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to provide for severability, and to provide for the effective date, to provide for the renumbering or relettering, to declare an emergency, to allow for a second reading, and for other purposes. By adopting this ordinance, the City Commission will amend the City Code of Ordinance, section six dash seventy-four, six dash seventy-six, clearly define and process of applying for an alcoholic beverage license and due process rights if the application is denied. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this ordinance?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Has been motioned, is there a second?
Second the motion.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, moving into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance passes. Madam Clerk?
Privileged licenses. My Place Lounge, Christie Williams, Llewellyn Robinson, ten oh seven Albany Avenue, Waycross, Georgia, three one five oh three, consumption on premises, beer, wine, and liquor. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this privileged license?
For approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, moving into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Privileged license approved. Madam Clerk?
Resolutions. A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to establish qualifying fees for city of Waycross elections for twenty twenty-one and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will fix and publish the qualifying fees for elective office for the city commissioner to be held during twenty twenty-one. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, moving into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to take appropriate civil action as it relates to the Confederate Memorial and Civil War era cannon that are located in Phoenix Park and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will authorize letter being sent to the owners of the Confederate statue and cannon to remove the privately owned statue and cannon, and for the city will take appropriate civil action. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have a motion to receive?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table this issue until another date.
There's a motion to table this resolution. Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, moving into voting. All in favor to table this resolution? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution table. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to approve the sale and transfer of certain surplus real property located at the corner of Alpha and Ethel Streets and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will authorize the preparation and execution of quitclaim deed to Tyrone S. Harris Senior for certain city-owned surplus real property located at the corner of Alpha Street and Ethel Street, being point two zero four acres for eight hundred dollars. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Ware County Board of Commissioners and its Board of Elections to conduct the city's elections and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve an agreement with Ware County Board of Commissioners and its Board of Elections to continue to conduct the city's elections. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to award contract to American Tank Maintenance of Perry, Georgia, for city's annual water tank maintenance project and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve a contract with American Tank Maintenance of Perry, Georgia, for annual upkeep, being washouts and inspections for the city's seven water tanks at the cost of fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars per year, for one year with an option to renew for four more years at the same annual cost. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to approve AmerisBank as the city's official city depository and banking services provider and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve AmerisBank as the city officials' depository for banking services, credit card services, and merchant services. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to approve amendment number two to the agreement with Corvail Enterprise Comp, Inc., for the city's workers' compensation insurance services and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve an amendment to its agreement with Corvail to provide workers' compensation insurance for the city employees. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Waycross, Georgia, to approve payment for Microsoft licenses for calendar year two thousand twenty-one and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve the budgeted annual payment for the Microsoft licensing agreement, in which will now include Office three sixty-five for calendar year two thousand twenty-one. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive this resolution?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Has been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
So we don't have any guests?
No, sir.
At this time, we move into our last call. Commissioner Solomon Gates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone who took part in our Dr. ML King Celebration on yesterday at the city auditorium. It was a huge success. The program was geared toward our young people. We had quite a few of them there. They got to ask questions of the speakers, who all kind of gave us their history as far as the civil rights experiences were concerned. We're gonna try to do this again. I also want to address, I did it in work session, but again, say that I'm so very sorry that we were not able to have a parade this year. And that was due because of staff shortages with the ML King Holiday Commission. We just didn't have enough people there to organize it. So I want to say this. Poor Mr. Mayor gets dinged all the time. He gets, everything gets blamed on him. The city of Waycross has absolutely nothing to do with the ML King Parade nor the Christmas Parade. Both of those parades are done by, for example, the Christmas Parade, the downtown merchants handles that. They organize that, and the same thing with the ML King Holiday Commission. We deal with the, or handle the parade for ML King. Now, we've had some people to come forward this afternoon. They want to, they want to try something else. They want to have another parade for Black History Month. And so we're gonna work very, very hard with them to help them make this a possibility. So please understand that not everything that goes on in Waycross is the fault of the mayor and this commission. We don't, we don't make all those decisions. We have private entities sometimes, or individuals, or just groups of people who come to us with their ideas. Only thing we do is try to support them if we can. And that support comes through the police department, or the fire department, or public works. And we just do what we can to support anyone who wants to do anything in this city that's positive. Also, during our work session earlier today, we had a young man come in here who used to live here. He came back to Waycross for business, I think, and also to visit family. But he talked about how strange it is for him to walk around Waycross and our stores and other places in our community, and people are not wearing masks. They're not wearing masks. And so we had to explain that the city could only enforce that so much because our governor, unless the governor across the board enforces it in Georgia, we can't do any more than the governor's last order allowed us to do. So we understand that. I say the same thing when I go to the stores, and when I go out in public, the people are not wearing their mask. So what my sorority is planning on doing, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, our Waycross Luminy Chapter, is we're gonna, we're gonna pitch an idea to everyone and encourage everybody. Starting tomorrow, we want everyone to wear a mask, to commit to wearing a mask for at least one hundred days. At least one hundred days. Just make that commitment to keep yourselves safe, keep other people safe. Because this, this COVID is growing, and it's growing quickly. I believe in, in Waycross, Ware County, we lost maybe two more people today, the city manager. The number she sent us, two or three, but we, we're losing people almost every day, almost every day. So if something as simple as putting on a face mask is going to help, please do that. Please make that commitment. Please, don't wait till it hits somebody that you're close to, or that someone in your household dies as a result of not wearing masks. Just, just commit to it, just do it. Put it on your face when you're out in public, you know, and when you get home, take it off if you want to, but I'm, I'm just, I'm tired of seeing the numbers go up. So we need, we need to. Back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. At this time, Commissioner Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'd just like to ditto what Marion said. Tanya, today, those numbers, was it at eight more deaths today? We had, we had eight more deaths today in Ware County. Now, this is ridiculous. And it, and no, does it look good, or does it feel comfortable? No, it doesn't. But I'd much rather wear a mask and try to protect myself or someone else. And I saw two employees standing out front today, just as we walked in, didn't have a mask on, talking face to face. So Tanya, you need to encourage your staff to wear a mask. We wear them when we come, and they need to wear them too. We've got too many cases in this city and this county. So it's a very, very concern of mine. We're having too many deaths and too many, if, when Tanya sends those numbers out every day that we get, they're accurate, and the hospitals are full. So this is a serious situation we have right now in Waycross and Ware County. They can't even take patients here right now. The hospitals are so full. I had a classmate that had to go out of town because of COVID. She, she was there three days, and she died today. So it's a serious situation. Some get over it quicker than others, but some don't make it at all. So please, as Marion said, please, everybody cooperate and wear a mask. If you don't like to wear it, at least wear it for protection of other people, because you don't know when you might be a carrier as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Commissioner Threet?
Um, I would like to also piggyback on both commissioners and represent everyone when you mask. Um, I'd just like to speak from my position and when I, when I had it. Um, it's a scary feeling when you're not able to breathe, and it feels like glass. Being in ICU for four days and right at five days, can't talk, can't really do much of anything, and going through a lot of struggles. Um, it's an eye-opener. Um, I saw something on the news that they stated that this next wave that's coming, this right here is not gonna be enough. They're talking about we're gonna have to double this or use something else. Um, whenever it does hit your family and your family members, for those of you that's not wearing it, you know, um, I have sympathy for you, but right now, people are trying to tell you, please wear it, please wear it, please wear it. It's over and over again to the first responders just out there. I know they go into these houses and make contact with these people every day. They put their lives on the line. Someone do have underlying conditions. And they jeopardizing their lives around you all that don't wear a mask. And we're asking you as a city, please, ma'am, please, sir, wear your mask. And, um, I also like to get some clarification. Now, the city manager on My Place Lounge, I appreciate you all coming out tonight representing your business on when they can get their license.
Um, yes, sir.
Tonight? You say tonight? Tomorrow, tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, tomorrow.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so we're clear. It'll be first thing tomorrow. You check with them. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Chief Eddings for her prayer tonight. It was very wonderful and very spot-on. And, uh, that's the kinda leadership we have in this, in this city and in this community. It's faith, those people who love the people around them and love this community dearly. Speaking of which, I'd like to say thank you to, to Sheriff Randy Royal for his dedication and service for forty years in this community. Very well-loved man. My grandfather hired him when he was seventeen years old to work at that jail. And he, he spent his life there and made that his life to serve this community, and he looked at everyone in this community as his family. He's a very fair and honorable man who did the seat proud, and he will leave a, a lasting legacy that, uh, will be very hard to follow up. But during this time, I ask that our community have love for whoever is the next sheriff when the election comes, and embrace them and allow them to learn and grow as well. And if we're lucky and prayerful, maybe God will send us a shepherd like we have with Randy Royal. And I wanna say thank you to the city and everyone that came out to his funeral on Saturday. Our departments represented the city extremely well. You, very professional, very honorable, and I know Sheriff Randy Royal will be, he was extremely honored to have y'all there. And for the people that came from very far away to, to, to be there at his service, thank you as well. It's just a testament of the man and the commitment that he made to this community. And so I ask our community to, to please look at the example that Randy Royal set for us all. And please have love and admiration for your neighbor and for the people around you, to be patient with one another, even though you differ. Please be patient with one another. Try to see the perspective in which they're coming from, evaluate it, learn from it. But at the same time, just remember that they and ourselves also have good intentions, and try to find some common ground on which we can work upon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
In the form of last word for tonight, I wanted to address a few things. As the communicator and as a person who talks to people on a daily basis, one of my concerns has been that we have a lot of misinformation and a lot of miseducation and missed opportunities to clarify and clear up things that are being said and done. One of the problems that we have is that we don't know rules, protocols, codes, or ordinances. And as a result of that, we make decisions based upon how we feel or what it perceives to be. But perceptions can be false, as well as there are some that are true. And I wanted to comment on something that was said just a few moments ago. I made a statement regarding the COVID vaccines. We sometimes don't think about vaccines to the point that we should. One, when I was a child, we had to take Rubella. We had to have influenza shots. Those were things we had to have before we could go back to school. Measles, mumps, and Rubella shots. And it's strange that when an individual goes on a job and that job requires them to interact with other people, they don't want to wear the mask, they don't wanna be vaccine, vaccinated. But that does not ensure that you keep a job. You must make sure you do what your job requests and requires of you, or you may not have one. In the same sense, when things are going on in the city, I've given you opportunity. You know the number here, two eight seven twenty-nine hundred. You can always call. And if you have questions and concerns, you can get them addressed, but first you must make sure you call. Making assumptions makes something different. I started to say what it makes, Jada, but I won't go that today, cause I, I feel like this might be rebroadcast multiple times, so I'll just say it this way. Don't make an assumption or make a conclusion without having, first of all, gotten all of your information. Do your research. Ask questions, and especially ask people who have the information. There are times you're talking to people who are just as dull about it than, as you are when you don't know it. So it may be wise to ask someone who does know. In this particular case, one of the thoughts I had with regard to these different events that go on in Waycross, there are three votes that have to be made. Most things that come through here, if the three votes don't come from the commission, the bishop, the mayor can't sign off. If I sign off on something, it has already gone through this board, and it will be documented. You will see it. You have the right to read it, and you can go online at W A Y X TV. And there, in that section, there's a little spot there where you can click, and it lists all our resolutions and everything that has been signed by me. If you do not see it there, that means it has not happened. I don't care who tells you that it did. So in reality, you make sure that before you open your mouth or type a word, that you get your information right. And I appreciate you doing just that. That's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.